Okay, good to go.
All righty, thanks, Amy. We'll try to get started here this morning. This is our Tuesday, February 23rd Planning Commission meeting on Zoom. I apologize for the little technical issues. When you've got 34 or 35 people participating, sometimes it's, you know, we have these little bugs. Anyway, just want to welcome everybody this morning and hope everybody's doing well. We will go ahead and get started here. Amy, if you would, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think you have something, the flag that you're going to screen share?
Yes, give me just a moment to get there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, if you would, folks, just join me for our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all. All right, Amy, thank you very much. With that, before we get into the approval of the minutes and our public hearings, let's go ahead and get all the staff sworn in. Miss Hightew.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
That first thing before we get into the first public hearings is the approval of the minutes of our January 26th to 2021 Planning Commission regular meeting. I think you all have copies of the minutes. Could I get a motion to approve them? And then a second?
I make a motion that we approve the January 26th Planning Commission minutes.
Okay, moves the motion. And who seconded it? Mr. Elder? Okay. All right. With that, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes as mailed? Any additions or correction? I don't, I don't think everybody's on the screen. So, you know, if you have any additions, you might have to just speak up and then I'll recognize you. Okay, seen or hearing none? We'll just do a voice vote on this. All those in favor of approving the minutes as mailed for our January 26th meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, minutes have been approved.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to have Bree call roll so she can see everyone that, so she knows who's on?
That'd be fine. Besides you, if you would, just go ahead and call individual roles and then just acknowledge yourself as being on.
Ms. Hagan?
He is not present.
Okay. Mr. Elder?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Ms. Davis? He's waving yes. He's waving yes.
Mr. Finney?
Here. Here.
The echo is back. The echo is back.
Keep going, Bree. I muted one person. Let me see if that fixes it.
Okay. Mr. Halfley?
Here.
Mr. Falby?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. King?
Mr. King? I'm here.
Mr. Jeffries?
We still got that. We still got that.
Mr. Douglas?
Here. Here.
Ms. Bonet?
Laura, you're on mute.
I'm here. I'm sorry. I was waiting for the echo.
Mr. Klingefus? Klingefus?
Here.
May I interrupt? Bobby, are you on?
May I interrupt?
Bobby, are you on?
Pardon me?
Do you have two devices on?
Do you have two devices on?
Not to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge. I mean, I'm not using my cellphone. I don't know what else it would be. I'll just, want me to stay unmuted?
Okay, Bree, keep going.
Okay. Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Ms. Nasser?
Here.
And Mr. Smith?
Here.
Only one we have absent is Ms. Hagan.
All right. Thank you. And with that, I think we'll move into our first docketed item. And Miss Hightew, if you would, read that into the record, please.
Sure. We have docket PZ-21-002. Application has been filed by Third Turn Brewing LLC for the approval of a waiver from Section 280-150, Item 3, Parking Lot Layout and Design. The property is located at 6,300 Old LaGrange Road, Crestwood. The zoning is I-1 Light Industrial District.
All right, thank you. And with that, Ms. Abby, are you doing the introduction on this docket?
No, that will be Mr. McIntyre.
Okay. Mr. McIntyre, if you would, introduce the docket here for the commission, please.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, I'll begin a screen share. As Ms. Hightew had stated, an application has been filed by Third Turn Brewing for approval of a waiver from Section 280-150, Item 3, Parking Lot Layout and Design. Property is located at 6,300 Old LaGrange Road, Crestwood. The zoning is I-1 Light Industrial. Here we have the aerial, followed by the pavement map and the zoning map. On April 25th, 2017, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a waiver allowing parking areas for non-residential uses located between a public street and the principal building to not be paved for the front portion of the property. The applicant is utilizing an existing 4,726 square foot building, gravel parking lot, and existing outdoor areas to operate a microbrewery and taproom. Perly submitted site plan, the applicant is proposing overflow parking at the rear of the property. The applicant is requesting a waiver of Section 280-1503, surfacing and maintenance, which requires all off-street parking areas to be kept in a dust-free condition in order to allow for overflow parking to not be paved and remain gravel and grass. There are no parking standards for microbreweries or taprooms in Section 280-080, Non-Retail Commercial/Recreational Parking Regulations. The facility does provide food, so staff determined that the use classification is proportional to an ice cream/coffee shop use rather than a restaurant use. As it stands today, the existing gravel parking lot provides parking for 60 spaces. The proposed overflow parking provides an additional 204 parking spaces. The applicant will provide five additional handicap parking spaces, making that a total of seven. The applicant's justification is that the parking lot is engineered to allow for proper water runoff. Introducing pavement to the parking area will be detrimental to the established trees and plants that define the space. Several neighboring properties have parking areas engineered with gravel and multiple vent properties. In the county utilize grass lots for parking as well. When property, when properly maintained gravel parking lots, or when properly maintained gravel parking lots do not create a dust issue or cause any other nuisance to patrons or neighboring businesses. The overall aesthetic of Third Turn Oldham Gardens is rustic and rural. So here we have the approval from 2017. In orange, you can see what the waiver was for in 2017. This is the area between the principal building and the street, Old LaGrange Road down here. This is the existing gravel area. Here you can see this red line. This red line's important as the overflow parking is north of that. So let's go to the next slide. Here is the overflow parking in blue. So again, this area down here was the orange. What they're applying for today is to allow for this overflow parking north of the red line and this portion of blue down south of the red line to continue to be gravel and grass. Here we have a view looking north of Old LaGrange Road. Here we have a view looking south. You can see South Oldham Fire right over here. Here we are looking into the property at Third Turn. Here we're looking across the street at the CSX rail line. Again, the proposed binding elements are the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the February 23rd, 2021 Planning Commission Public Hearing. And the plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county laws and ordinances and requirements at the time of the approval. Be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre, before we get into that, is there, Mr. Solomon, do you have anything that you need to add?
No, just that, I think considering the applicant's justification statements and the performance of the gravel and grass parking they have currently, I don't have an issue with this.
Okay. And for folks that don't know, Mr. Solomon is the Oldham County engineer. So with that, is the staff, any other staff have any thing that they need to add at this point? Okay. With that, we'll open it up now for any questions from the commissioners, the staff. Anybody have any questions?
I've got a question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. King?
Thank you. Mr. McIntyre, can you confirm the illustration of the overflow parking area is not representative of the overall site boundaries and is contained completely within the site boundaries?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff?
Laura Bonet has a question.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
If it's being classified more as an ice cream/coffee shop use, how many parking spaces are they required to have?
That is a great question. I know we looked into, looked into this. Another within their boundary. So their minimum would be 173 and their maximum is 347. With those two together and the old section with the new, it'd be 200, they're going to be at 264. So they'll be within their minimum and maximum allowance.
Okay. So basically, the reason I wanted to know that is they have 60 nails, so they actually need some more parking to meet the requirement.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Finney?
Yes. When this was approved the first time back in 2017, was there a required pavement apron at the end of the parking lot to reduce the tracking of limestone out on the highway at that time?
So the staff report from 2017, it, the waiver was to allow, to allow them to not have to do that, but they ended up agreeing to have an apron. And then that apron would extend. It extended a certain amount of feet into the property and then will continue with the gravel.
So there was an apron actually established at that particular?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Speaker?
Oh, yes. Who's speaking? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Elder. Go ahead.
Is it Third Turn or a third party who's providing food service up there?
That might be a question for the applicant.
It is a, it is a third-party subtenant.
Okay. We'll, we'll get to you here in just a minute, but we'll, this is mostly for staff at this point, but we'll, we'll get that clarified, Mr. Elder, when we get into the applicant's presentation. Mr. Douglas?
Yes. For staff, the existing parking spaces that were already there, the 60, and that was already approved in 2017, under Section 280-150, Number 3, were they required to come in for this additional waiver? Since it appears that all the other parking spaces are not, I guess, between a public street and the principal building, are they doing modifications to the existing parking spaces?
From what I'm, from the 2017 case, the 2017, they were, that waiver was for not having to pave any, any type of vehicular use area between this, the taproom and this right-of-way, the public road. So that's what the 2017 was for. What they're coming for today is for when they, for this overflow parking that's in the rear of the property, they want to have that also be basically not asphalt or not a hard surface. Well, a little bit different.
Need to come in for that? I mean, according to 280-153?
Yes. Well, you know, first of all, it's supposed to be a non-dusting surface. And then the other issue is that you'll hear, I hope the applicant tell you how their business has grown over time. And when we talked to them, because they called us and told us what their kind of next interest was in terms of events at this property, we suggested that they come into the Planning Commission simply because we didn't have a complete comfort level with approving it without the commission's review, given the previous application.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Any other other questions for staff?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Nasser?
What was the determination on ice cream/coffee shop?
Well, and that's a hard one because there, again, there's nothing in our parking requirements to talk about, especially this particular operation. It's unusual. It's not a all-inclosed inside of a building. And of course, with all the greenhouses and all the space outdoors, they have plenty of room for accommodating large amounts of people. Those people come in, a large, significant amount of cars. So it's not a real perfect comparison between ice cream shop. But that's the way we did it the first time, given the scope of what they were proposing initially. And, you know, the good news is their business is growing, you know, in a great way. And so now they're needing to expand. And so it's not a great comparison, but it's the only thing that we, it's not a carryout restaurant. It's not a retail. It's, it's a very unique situation in Oldham County.
All right. Ms. Nasser, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Or staff? Okay, seen none. We'll now move into the presentation by the applicant or representative and others in support of the application. And you have 50 minutes to make your presentation.
Morning, Your Honor. Commissioners, Curry Butler, I'm the attorney for Third Turn Brewing.
Before you get started, let me get Ms. Hightew to swear in who will be speaking on your behalf or with you. Besides you?
I solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay. And Mr. Butler, if you would, just name an address again for the record.
Yes. My name is Curry Butler, K-E-R-R-Y-B-U-T-L-E-R. I'm the attorney for Third Turn Brewing. My office address is on New LaGrange Road in Linden, down in Louisville. With me today is Greg Hayden, who's one of the owners of Third Turn Brewing, and he's going to present the, the application and support of what they're, what they're trying to do out there. In essence, just for clarification purposes, I wanted to make sure that the, that the commissioners understood that the area that is being requested for the extended waiver is a, is a, while it's a very large area, it is an area that is used infrequently. It is only used in instances where there's an extreme crowd. And, and quite frankly, they've estimated that it would be no, no more than 30 times a year. And that's with all things being perfect. Their, their business is very weather-driven in that most of their seating area is outside. And while it's under a greenhouse, that greenhouse does not have a roof on it. It has a natural canopy. So when it rains, or when it's unseasonably cold, that area is, for all intents and purposes, is not used. Their, their, their attendance at the, at the site is, is very much driven by the weather. And warm weather is their, is their grade A time of the year. So without that, without any further statement from myself at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Greg Hayden, who is the, one of the owners of the brewery.
I made your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Greg Hayden, and my address is 6404 Shelton Circle, Unit 309, Crestwood, Kentucky, 40014.
All right, go ahead, sir.
My name's Greg Hayden. I'm with Third Turn Brewing. I'm one of the owners there on that location. And in regards to our request for the parking spaces, we appreciate Jim, Amy, what you all have done to help us get set up and get started. Our last agreement was to come in to speak to how to use that parking lot. Since we've taken over that parking lot, we have, as we mentioned before, taken over, we have equipment, we have actual work and frequency with our gravel company to bring in new stuff. So that way, we keep everything filled level and graded on the regular basis. We have since became a little popular during the, the warm weather timeframe. And when we do become kind of popular during that timeframe, we have a need for additional parking. That parking is further away from our space. So, you know, as you can imagine, when we're during our regular season, everybody parks up close. So that parking space that we already have is utilized the most. The overflow just continues around the back. And part of that is on gravel. The remaining back part of the property is on grass. You know, as, as my attorney had mentioned, that we typically only utilize the overflow during the busiest time of the year. So think about whenever it's warm weather with all the outside spaces that we have, or if we want to do an event such as like an Easter market or something of the like, where people would come in, and then we utilize that overflow parking during that timeframe. As you might imagine, when the weather is not good, we don't have as many people show up, so we don't have utilization of that overflow parking. So we, we generally don't have any issue with any of the grass parking spots. The water runoff in that area is good. We haven't had any issues with it. You know, over the seasons that we've had, and we've had several kind of, you know, I would say like kind of flooding rains come through, and we've managed with that. The parking that we've established with gravel has settled well with having the number of cars on it that we've had and the ability to spread and regrade as needed. We have the equipment to do that ourselves, so we're not waiting on other folks to do that. We've worked with our neighbors and other properties as well to make sure that everything is going well there and have a good relationship with them. The, the general aesthetic of the property that we have has been maintained, and we've kept that up. We've worked with our, we are lease on that property, and we've worked with UDL to make sure that our property is kept up well and to make sure that it, you know, speaks well of the area. That is about all I have, unless Jim or Amy, if I have missed anything in the agreement you think would be necessary.
All right. Is that, is that complete your presentation in?
It does.
Okay. All right. With that, is there anyone on the Zoom meeting that would like to speak in support of this application?
This is Paul Capiello from UDL.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted just to add that we've, we've had a great working relationship.
It's, let me get you, you weren't sworn in earlier, were you?
No, I was not.
Okay, let's get Ms. Hightew to swear you in, please, and we'll get your name and address for the record.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right. And like I said, just name and address for the record.
Paul Capiello, C-A-P-P-I-E-L-L-O, 2219 Woodford Place in Louisville, Kentucky, 40205.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, just wanted to add my support. We've had a long, very positive relationship with Third Turn. They've done a great job developing the property. And we don't see anything in their proposal that's contrary to the way we see the property being used. So as Mr. Hayden mentioned, water runoff issues, things like that are things that we are fine on. So, so we, we're certainly in support of their request for this, this change.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in support of the application? Okay, seen, seen none. We'll now move into the next portion of the hearing, which is testimony and questions by those opposing the application. Is there anyone on the Zoom meeting that would like to either testify or have questions opposing this application? Okay. Ms. Steele, did you have any questions?
I think she's having some audio problems. I've been chatting with her. She was on for the Brownsboro Woods, which was deferred. So we probably need to make note of that in the record, that it was on the agenda, but it has been deferred to the March meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else on the call that would have testimony or questions opposing the application? Okay, seen none. We'll now move into the part of the hearing of the question of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission. So commissioners, you have, we have 30 minutes here. Anybody have any questions? Okay. I don't see any hands going up, or I don't hear anyone. Now, Mr. Urban?
I actually have one. Mr. Finney actually raised a question about paving at the entrance, which hasn't been done, I don't believe. And I'd like to ask the applicant if they have intention to pave that entrance so they're not carrying gravel out into Old LaGrange Road.
Mr. Butler?
I'll divert Mr. Hayden.
Okay.
Yes. So what we've done is we've looked at that front property and the ability to get it completely paved in that area with the weight of the trucks that come through. What we've done is we've established where the entrance comes in. We have put concrete down underneath the locations to keep it from falling down. And as we have built that up, it has come to a solid kind of entrance. And we do have a little bit of gravel that gets turned in and out of the front of the lot from time to time. We do sweep that back in. But we have built up concrete over time at the front of that entrance, and we've kept building it up over the years. So we have established probably one quarter of the front of that entrance from forming any type of pothole or anything like that. We do imagine that we will still be kicking up a little bit of, a little bit of gravel from time to time on the front, especially when heavy vehicles come in. But we do have delivery times for those, so we kind of work with them on getting that. So over time, that whole front lot should be concreted up to the top. Now, you'll still see gravel come over it because it will touch the gravel lot. So there will be gravel brought over top of it over time.
Thanks. Any other, any other questions for the commissioners? Okay, hearing, oh, Ms. Finney. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'm not sure that addresses the issue of carrying gravel and lime dust out on the highway, on the public highway. And that was the reason for us addressing that issue back in 2017 was, was keeping the lime dust and everything off of, off of the public highway by creating an apron into the property so that the tires would be cleaner as they came onto the public highway. And that was the purpose for having that apron to start with. So if the apron hasn't been done, there's a problem, like problem with, you know, little compliance here or something, you know, you might say, which needs, may need to be addressed because the idea is not, not sinking, the idea is keeping the highway clean for the public. We're not tracking, tracking lime dust on the cars if the road's wet. So that was, that was the purpose back in 2017. And it should be something that has been done, has been completed by now.
Mr. Hayden or Mr. Butler?
So we, we worked with Jim and Amy on that and talked about the weight of the trucks that were coming through on the first paving option that was mentioned, which I believe was about a $9,000 paving issue on getting that in. And what was established was the weight of the trucks were too heavy to establish that. So what we've done is we've kept building up concrete in the front of that area where anything formed to keep that from happening. So we were building up concrete over time to get that weight established. Because the problem would be is you could pave it, but then you would run into the same problem, which is you would be dragging, you would be dragging the gravel up to the front constantly if it kept sinking down lower, which would then just drag it out further to the road. So the idea was to build up concrete over time. So that way, what happens is the gravel stays back as it pushes up. So the idea was to build up concrete over time. So that way what happens is the gravel stays back as it pushes up against the concrete as opposed to going down and sinking under and coming back up and getting closer. So we keep pushing that back further and further by building up the concrete, but we, we absolutely do not have a solid paved entrance.
Okay. Uh, any, anyone else have any other questions? Any more comments? Okay, um, with this point, we'll then move into, I guess, the final statement of the applicant. Mr. Butler or Mr. Hayden?
Uh, no, we, we appreciate, uh, everything that, uh, you all have done for us. And certainly, uh, with the previous one, it's allowed us to get a lot of folks into our space. And, uh, as soon as people have seen our space, uh, you know, we're able to bring more and more people in. Uh, with the two of us owners moving out there to, uh, Crestwood as well, uh, you know, we look forward to, uh, uh, spending a lot more time with you all and hopefully coming to you all with other projects in the future.
All right. Mr. Butler, does that complete your application then?
It does, Your Honor.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I'm, I'm a judge either one, so just want to.
That's a force of habit.
Okay, no problem, no problem. Um, all righty. Well, with that, uh, we will close, uh, the docket, uh, here on, um, PZ, uh, 21002, and I'll call on, as always, uh, Mr. Urban and Mr. Carter, uh, to outline, uh, I guess, Mr. Urban first, to outline what's being requested here.
It's a request to, uh, for a waiver from section 28150, item three for parking lot layout and design, uh, to keep the parking lot that was shaded in blue in Mr. McIntyre's, uh, presentation, uh, gravel and grass for overflow parking for events. Uh, there are two proposed conditions of approval. The first is that the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the February 23rd, 2021 uh, Planning Commission Hearing. And the second is that the plan must comply with all established federal, state and county laws and ordinances and requirements at the time of the approval. Uh, as always, on page two and three, you have sample motions, uh, in your staff report.
All righty, Mr. Urban, thank you. Uh, Commissioners, at that point, um, you've heard what's being requested on this docket. Uh, the chair would now entertain a motion on this waiver request. If we get a moment, then we'll open it up for discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Fauci, go ahead.
Uh, I, uh, make motion to approve the waiver. Uh, because, uh, strict compliance with the regulations would, uh, create an undue hardship because of the exceptional, unique topographic or natural or man-made physical conditions of the property. I would include the proposed conditions of approval outlined by, uh, Jim Urban.
Okay, Mr. Fauci, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hampton, seconds. All right, I'll ask, Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve on docket PZ 21002. Parking, or the waiver, uh, from section 280150, item three, parking lot, uh, layout and design. So do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Mr. Penny?
Well, I have still have a problem with this, um, uh, apron. Uh, speaking of concrete, he could, it could be built out of concrete or, or asphalt. Uh, the problem is saying, well, his trucks are too heavy. Well, they build, build them out of concrete and asphalt to handle semi trucks on, on interstate highways. So there's no problem with doing either one. I mean, it can be, it can be engineered, done with a, enough apron to be, um, to handle any size truck. I mean, that's not a problem. It's just a matter of engineering. So it was, I, I think, uh, in, in 2017, it was probably a condition of approval. I don't know, Mr. McIntyre can probably verify that on that, uh.
It is, it is not a conditional, it was not a binding element, but on number five of the staff report. It stated that the applicant will also pave the entrance connecting with Lagrange Road in order to keep gravel and dust from collecting in the public roadway.
Okay, so it, but it was part of the.
It was included in the staff report, but not, not a binding element.
Not a condition approval. It wasn't a staff report. Okay. So should it be made a condition of approval for this one to get it, in order to get it done?
Can I, uh, can I offer this? And if Jim Solomon is on, he can chime in too. Uh, what I heard in testimony, uh, is that they are continually maintaining that entrance and building it up. And then also that they're, uh, sweeping Oldagrange Road. So granted, it may not be in perfect order all the time, but they, they, uh, Mr. Hayden did say that he goes and sweeps that. Um, I think it would be reasonable for Mr. Solomon to go out and look at, uh, what they've done. And, uh, make sure that it's, uh, you know, working to really keep that gravel from coming out onto the street.
But, yeah, I, I agree, uh, Mr. Urban, I, uh, I'd be glad to go look at this and, uh, provide my input. It wasn't something I inspected prior to the hearing, um, but I agree with you, Mr. Finney.
Okay. All right. Um, any further discussion on the motion to approve the waiver request? Any further discussion? Okay, seen none or seen, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fauci? Oh, okay. Anyone else have any additional discussion? Okay, with that, we will proceed to vote on docket PZ 1002 on the approval of a waiver from section 280150, item three. And I'll call on Ms. Highshue, and this is a motion to approve the waiver request.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Your hand's up?
She's waving yes.
Mr. Douglas?
He gave a thumbs up.
Mr. Elder did? I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. Fauci?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Happling?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Clankus? I don't have him on my screen.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Ms. Nasser?
Bob, turn your, your mic, yeah, yeah, I think we've discovered who's got the echo. I think it's Mr. Clankus. Go ahead.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
It is 13 to zero.
All right, the motion on the waiver request on docket PZ 21002 has been approved on a vote of 13 to zero. All right, uh, with that, do you all, the Commissioners need to take a break before we get into our next docketed item? Uh, Ms. Nasser, you do? Okay. Let's take about a 10-minute recess here and, and be back, uh, right at 10 o'clock and we'll move into our next docketed item. Thank you all.
Thank you.